Good evening. I'd like to open the Milton Planning Board's 16th meeting of fiscal year 2020. I'm Cheryl Taggias, the Chair.
Denny Swenson, Secretary.
Kathleen O'Donnell, Member.
April Anderson, Member.
Allison Quinn, Assistant Planner.
William Clark, Planning Director.
Okay. Our administrative items are the first thing on our agenda. Our next meeting date is March 12th. And then, it's not on our agenda here, but we'll have one March 26th, which would be the fourth Thursday of March. The next item would be approval of minutes. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes? I don't recall seeing minutes.
I didn't see any, no.
So, I think, we don't have any, right?
We may have them, but I haven't looked at them yet.
Yeah, Julia, I think Julia updated them to the draft.
She updated them, but none of us have looked at them.
None of us have looked.
Okay, so we're going to defer the meeting minutes.
Too many applications this week. I thought we approved a bunch less today.
We did. So, I think we probably only have the last meeting outstanding. So, next on the agenda, citizens speak. Before we get to that, there are a couple of items on the agenda to our public hearings, and then we have new business of discussion of 40B applications, and then old business of Milton Village overlay. So, if there's anyone here who would like to address the board on items that are not on the agenda, so the two public hearing items, the first is site plan approval for Little Sprouts preschool. We're simply going to open and continue that, and then we'll have no discussion on that tonight. And then we'll have amendment of the special permit for the Walcott Woods project, 1672, 1702, and 1726 Canton Ave. And that's purely architectural modification. So, is there anyone here who would like to address the board on a matter that's not related to what I just reviewed? Yes?
Is the audio on?
I think so. Can you not hear me?
Some of us are having a little bit of a...
All right, let me try moving it closer. Can you hear me now?
No.
Better?
I can hear you, but it doesn't seem like it's coming through the...
I see. Oh, yeah. Okay. All right.
That would save your voice. It's horrifying.
Yeah, I do want to save my voice because I'm losing it. Okay, is there anyone here who would like to address the board? Okay, then, we have 15 minutes before our public hearings are scheduled at 7:30, and we have to wait for those until then. So, we're going to move to old business, the Milton Village overlay discussion. We had received comments from Alex Whiteside the night before our prior meeting two weeks ago, and we said that we would take the time to review those comments and discuss those tonight. The other thing, as an update, is the warrant committee has meeting on Monday, and they've asked that if we, if possible, if we have any edits that we would like to propose, that we submit them to them so that they consider them, they can consider them at their meeting on Monday. So, with that, we can get our, to our comments. Now, the comments, from my reading of them, have to do primarily with three topics, and one has to do with affordable housing, the other has to do with historic preservation provisions, and then the third has to do with parking provisions. So, I think Kathleen said to us at the last meeting that she had had a chance to review the comments, and while we, on the affordable housing, we had made revisions, Kathleen's suggestion, and as well as the Affordable Housing Trust and the Housing Committee. So, I don't, if anyone has read through them and thinks that there's something that they would like to amend in the current language of the zoning, you can go say so now.
I do not.
I, I thought, I wanted to discuss it. I thought his point about adding definitions for the terms, his, on page three of Alex's comments, he said definitions are needed for affordable housing, perpetual deed restrictions. He just said those should be defined.
I know, but I don't see the point in that. The, I don't think that zoning codes typically create, have different definitions of everything that is, you know, mentioned.
I think...
And, you know, I said, in the, what we basically want to know is that the units are going to count for the subsidized housing inventory. Is it how they get there? I don't think we really care. And so, the regulatory agreement is a standard form. I mean, those are kind of terms of art that are used all over the place. I don't know that we have to have a formal definition of it.
So, I was just going to say, Denny, my comment about that was similar to Kathleen's in that my only interest is that the units be counted on the SHI, and that's really something that the state would define. And I think if we try to further define it in our bylaw, who knows what's going to happen in the future, and we just don't want our bylaw to come into conflict with state regulatory agencies. And then somehow, we're going to have to go back and reinvent the wheel again here on the zoning to do what I think we all want to do is get the units on the SHI. So, that was my reaction to that comment.
Okay.
I just fear if we try to overemphasize things, we're just going to overly complicate things.
He had a bunch of explanations for why he thought otherwise. Okay, all right, well, my next, the next comment that I thought was helpful was page four. He thought we should add the word "design." After the word "design," add "floor area" and "number of bedrooms."
I actually agree with that.
That's fine.
I think it, it further explains.
Okay.
So, is that something, Bill, that you, you have that, Bill, do you have a copy of these comments with you to see where he said that?
No.
Okay. And, all right, so, so why don't we come back and decide how many other things? It's on page four. There, actually, the paragraphs are not numbered, but it's the paragraph that starts with, "The zoning should make provision for two bedroom, two bedroom units and resident preference." And if you look there, he's, he's suggesting we add those words to section seven.
You'd have to say residence of Milton, to the extent permitted by law. That isn't really something that you're allowed to do. You can have some preferences, but you can't require. So, if we did something like that, is like, yeah.
But this part, now you're going to the second part.
Okay, the second part, yeah. The first part, I, fine.
What we've done other times is put this Milton residence in the special permit language, right, Bill? Rather than in the zoning itself.
Yeah, I mean, as I said, typically...
So, in our decision, rather.
Yeah, I wouldn't put it in the zoning. It runs into trouble, and so I think we'd be better off to put it in a permit when it gets issued.
But the part that I said that I agreed with was adding the words "floor area" and "number of bedrooms."
Yeah, that's fine.
Floor area, or in what?
And "number of bedrooms." So, we're talking about comparable units. It's not just the quality of the design, but it's also the floor area. So, in other words, if the affordable one bedroom is, is the market one bedroom, we're going to be about the same size.
Yeah, you could do them, yeah.
You're not going to have a 550 square foot affordable one bedroom and an 850 square foot market bedroom, in other words, in this language.
Yeah, so that's fine.
Right? Okay. Okay, Denny?
So, he, he said the requirement, I'm sorry, on page four at the bottom, "The requirement that a restriction must be recorded in advance of a sale of any unit seems unnecessary and would probably be burdensome to a developer."
I think we had changed that language. You maybe have looked at an older version, because I think we're saying the restriction has to be reported before the certificates of occupancy.
Okay. That was a recent, or a later change?
Yeah. I think we had made that change two, two meetings ago.
On page five, where he says that he is, when we talk about rounding to the nearest whole number, he says he assumes that zero is not a whole number. So, if you, if the percentage would require, let's say, 1.2, the whole number, my assumption is it's zero. So, he's saying that it's, that's not a whole number, so if it's 1.2, then you're going to be, I mean, I'm sorry, so if your percentage would be .2, not 1.2, .2, that you'd still be required to do one unit, rather than if your percentage is .5 and you round up to one. Is that your understanding?
Math is not one of my strong points.
A whole number?
I was a history major, so I couldn't even ask that. I answered that question.
So, what he's saying is if it's .2, then, then they could do a contribution to a fund as opposed to come up with a whole unit.
Right.
So, they could do .2 of a unit, but in money instead of housing. I thought that was a good suggestion.
Mm-hmm. I think we want money. We want, we don't want money, we want a house. We want a unit.
We want, we want a unit.
We want a unit.
But if we're at .2, what do we do?
So, if it's under .5?
Yeah, if it's under 10 units, you know, and you're multiplying it times .12, or maybe it's under nine units, you wouldn't get, or if it's five unit development...
Yeah, okay. I don't have a problem with that.
All right, so...
But I mean, five unit development is not going to be able to financially afford to provide a whole unit.
Right, that's, that's the suggestion of making a financial contribution.
Okay, but how are we going to define what the financial contribution is? I forget how we set that up. Is that at our discretion?
Yeah.
Because, again, it could be a very small, challenged project, and we can't ask them for $200,000. I mean, maybe we can, I don't know, but I'm just saying, I can imagine a time, a scenario where that's economically...
Is that in paragraph, um, 4B?
It's on page five.
No, I'm trying to see what our language is.
What were he's referring it to? He doesn't refer to the language. It would be under the affordable housing section.
With the incentive, or just...
No, the base one.
The base one.
Can we look it up?
His point was that the requirement for a fractional unit should not be subject to rounding downward.
Sure.
So, you have it? But I can't see behind me there, Bill. So, it's section seven?
Yeah, I'll make it in a minute.
So, if a unit was $100,000, then you'd have to, the developer would have to come up with $20,000 if it was, you know, if they had to come up with .2 percent.
Well, we have our cash calculation based on the total development cost for the, if we were doing the, above the 12 percent. Is that what you're referring to? To that calculation that we, we put in?
Yeah.
But here first, though, where it says in a Milton Village mixed-use PUD, 12 percent of total housing units computed to the nearest whole number shall be affordable housing.
So, he's saying it's a computed to the nearest whole number. If you had less than five, it would be down to zero.
To zero.
So, you should just, if you just said computed up to the nearest whole number, would that take care of that problem?
It would bring up the problem that April has. We don't want them to have to help the whole unit.
But then if it's 1.2, then you're going...
It's 1.2, then they have to do two units.
Right. Which would be, that, I think, could be burdensome.
That would be hard.
Right.
Well, let's just leave it.
I think that seems something that needs more thought.
We should figure out how other people handle this.
Hmm?
Yeah. There's got to be.
I, I know that, I know that Boston has the, the contribution for the remainder. So, if you're requiring 2.2 units, you provide two units, and then the .2, there's a calculation.
So, can we just get there?
So, we could check how Boston defines that calculation. Okay. All right, so else, anything else on the affordable?
Sure. I'm not sure I understand his point about the, the unit percentages. The zoning does not explain how the applicable percentage would be determined. Oh, I think he's talking about on the fourth floor. I'm sorry. He's, he says in section 4B, "It's unclear how the affordable housing unit incentive allowing a fourth floor on Adams Street is supposed to work. The language allows a fourth story if a developer agrees to produce affordable units."
Well, the percent, the reason there's a variable in the percentage is, it's based really on different scale of project. We might want to go a 6 percent versus 8 percent additional, and that, that's why we did it that way, and it's hard to define it any further than that because you don't know exactly what that range might be in, in project size. But the, the applicant, you know, would have to apply for that bonus floor and state which they thought was appropriate, but the planning board would have final say which the, in the correct percentage or the approved percentage would be. Right?
Yeah.
So, so we don't want to provide a standard? We just want to leave it up to a future planning board to decide?
I think you need to, yeah, I mean, I don't think we want to be in the position, which we frequently are, of locking ourselves into such strict zoning that it can't be used. And it, there should be some flexibility allowed under the overlay district to have the planning board have some room to adjust for whatever permit gets, you know, presented to it.
I mean, I think one of the more recent examples of not allowing flexibility was in the Parkway PUD, and if you lock in a, a development particular type and it doesn't work for a particular parcel, then you're looking at a zoning change or variance. This allows us some flexibility within the special permit process. So, I think I'm comfortable leaving it that the way it is.
Yes, I am too.
Okay, anything else on the affordable housing?
Yeah, so, at the top of page six, he's, he was, I'm having trouble following this, but he was saying that it seems that a developer who agrees to produce 17 percent affordable units would be eligible to receive a hype bonus without producing any additional units.
But again, that's making some assumptions that the planning board would agree to that, and we're not obligated to agree to that under the zoning.
Right.
But I also feel like this issue might be addressed with the prior, prior one that we were talking about with the .2 or the .4. If we have language in there that says you're going to do, his example is 2.3, his calculation, we would say create the two units, we could say create three units, or we could say create two units and give us the .38 in a contribution.
Okay.
Using what sounds like Boston uses, but I'd like to see the language. I think, I mean, I think that satisfies the spirit of the comment, but you can tell me if you agree.
Yeah, I think so too.
Okay.
Okay, given that we have hit the 7:30 mark, we haven't talked about historic preservation and parking yet, but I'd like to say we'll defer that until later, and we'll move on to our public hearings, if that's okay?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so, one second to get my paperwork in order here. The 7:30 site plan approval for Little Sprouts preschool at 919 Blue Hill Ave., which is continued from our February 13th meeting. Hello, Ned Corcoran?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I am asking for a continuance for two weeks to March 12th. We had a very interesting site walk. I know that the Chair and Denny were present on Saturday with a number of neighbors, Director Butters and others, and we learned a lot about the site, how the site operates, potential impacts of a building as large as being proposed. So, we're taking a very hard look at a two-story alternative, pulling everything away from the Director Butters as far as possible, looking to see whether we can adjust the parking layout and providing egress onto Atherton Street, egress only, so that we avoid left turns out of the property onto 138 northbound. We're close on a draft of a site plan. We've been back and forth the last several days on several iterations. We have a meeting with the Public Safety Officials on Monday morning to review that plan, particularly the egress issue, and we'll be, we'll have a good set of alternative plans delivered in for the board by the end of next week. We'll share with the Butters and ready for hearing on, on March 12th.
So, one thing I would request is that, pursuant, basically to the request of folks who are at the site walk, is to get as broad a notice out to folks who would want to attend our meeting that, and if, if they'd like to attend the meeting you're going to have with them, there were some folks who felt like they were out of the technical Butter range but would like to be included, so hopefully they gave you their contact info and you can reach out to them as well.
I have, to the extent that I have contact information, I will email as well, as well as I can and ask them to spread, spread the word, as it were. And the other issue is that we are also scheduled to start the public hearing on the, with the Board of Appeals on the same night, the 12th. We're scheduled for a little later in the evening. We'd ask that we be first, I think 7:10 would be the request for here. We're scheduled for 7:45 upstairs with the Board of Appeals, and what I think, and I'm trying to reach the Chair and coordinate a little bit of schedule issues so that, you know, perhaps there could be a joint, we could meet jointly, or we could meet one backed up by the other, or if we need to continue that hearing to a later date, or at least they will know ahead of time as well that we're trying to coordinate with the two different boards to arrive at a good outcome.
All right. Any questions for Ned?
Nope.
That's great.
Okay, so then I'll take a motion to continue the hearing until March 12th, and what time, Bill?
7:10.
I'd like to back to, you want to do this first? I want to do, I'd like to be in front of you as early as possible. 7:05 would be great.
All right, 7:05?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we're going to end the public hearing for an amendment to the special permit for Walcott Woods, 1672, 1702, and 1726 Canton Avenue, architectural modifications. Hello, Mr. Dolly.
Hello, everyone.
Hello. So, tell us when you'd like us to go that way so we can see what's on the screen. I'm presuming you're presenting what, something on the screen?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't follow you.
Oh, because right now, we can't see.
You want to sit over here?
So, we're going to want to move over. Should we move over now?
Sure.
Okay.
Excellent, thank you.
Sure, if it helps.
Do you have popcorn?
I know, right? Oh, I think I better go that way.
There's some chairs over here. For the bleachers.
I'm having so much noise.
I'm right here. This is good, thank you.
Okay. Madam Chair and the rest of the planning board, thank you for hearing us tonight. As I outlined in, in my letter submitted a couple of weeks ago, since we received our special permit and closed on the property, we've been doing a number of different things, from closing on, raising capital, closing on the property, to commencing construction, but also looking at our architecture. As the special permit hearing process came to the close, really the last item we spent really a lot of time on was architecture. Much of it was focused around relocation of the carriage house without really a lot of focus on, on architecture. It seemed to get commingled, but nonetheless, as the summer and fall rolled along, we decided, and we started moving, you know, toward the vertical aspect of the project, we started to ask ourselves whether we had the right architectural formula for the site. As you know, what we proposed was essentially an updating of the package of architecture that we have used.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jack. Bill just reminded me, I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you just introduce yourself and the team just for those who are watching and here with us? Thank you.
Yep, sorry about that. My name is Jack Dolly, President and CEO of Northland Residential Corporation in Concord, Massachusetts. To my left is Stephen Gallagher, the Project Manager for the Walcott Wood Project, and to my right Christina Carlson from Union Studio and Community Design. She's an architect. We're here tonight to discuss with you a request that we have submitted to change the architectural team member of the Walcott Wood Project and the associated architectural unit design for the new units of the project. We came to this conclusion after considerable thought late summer, early fall, and during which we decided that we should take a fresh look at the architecture we were proposing for the site. That which we presented during the special permit process was an updating and a reconfiguration of much of the architecture, architectural unit design that we had used over on the Woodmere project off of Rush Hill Road. We also drew in some other floor plans from other projects that we have built, have done throughout New England. So, we had, you know, a mix that we thought was appropriate when we were going, you know, when we were presenting during the special permit process, but on reflection, we asked ourselves if we could do better and decided to ask a new architect, an architect that we had done business with on a job in Weymouth and more recently are working with on our 40B project in Wellesley, to take a crack at it. And Christina and her team at Union Studio and Community Design...
That's great.
...did just that, and started to develop some really architectural elevations, the floor plans of single, single and duplex kind of structures, first floor master bedroom, two-car garages, not exceeding 3,600 square feet in total, not exceeding 2.6 bedrooms in total, and located in the same exact configuration and footprint that the site plan presently reflects, or sort of, we're not sort of, we're the bookends or the brackets by which we ask them to look at. And so, much of what we'll see tonight is focused on the vertical elevational aspects of the architecture. We certainly can dive into kitchens and dining rooms and the like, but we feel that we, what we are about to present to you, what Christina's about to present to you, is a good, if not significant improvement over what we presented and you approved previously. As a way of process, we have met with, individually, we met with Hale and Tucker Smith before they went out of town on an extended vacation. That was last week?
Tuesday of last week, yep.
Tuesday of last week, Stephen did that. And then on Monday of this week?
Yes.
I've, I've been through a couple of hearings already this week, so I've lost track. On Monday of this week, we had, we hosted a community meeting at Fuller Village where we invited our distribution list, the distribution list that we have historically and presently communicate with on the project to come and hear the presentation which Christina is about to give. So, you have the stick.
Just one quick question, I'm sorry, Jack. Did you say also there's no change in the gross square footage?
Correct. Special permit as a way of reminder has a couple of caveats or limitations built into it, as well as the zoning, one of which is we can't have any more than in total 2.6 bedrooms per unit on average overall, so that would be 50 units times 2.6, whatever that math translates into. Really forces us into a blend or mix of two-bedroom units and three-bedroom units. The other thing that zoning and the special permit limit is the total square, what I'll call conditioned heated living space to 3,600 square feet. That would include whatever finished area one we or a client would choose to finish in a lower level, should a lower level be finishable by code, whether it has the right egress and the like. There is also tight limitations of 2.6 stories and 36 feet, and, and most importantly, the site plan. The site plan, where there's a duplex, a duplex will remain to be proposed or built. Where there is a single, the same, the number of duplex structures and the number of single structures is unchanged, and the, and the footprint, you know, but for a bump or a grind here or there, is the same. So, we couldn't, the, the danger here is that... So, we couldn't, the danger here is that we started to untangle the spaghetti bowl of drainage and utilities and grading and so on and so forth, and we did not want to do that. And I think we, in fact, I know we're successful, but that will be for you to determine. So, this request, since it is of significance, requires an amendment of the special permit, and so the ask of us, of you, is to amend the special permit to, A, change the architectural team member from Gristato Veleco Architects to Union Studio and Community Design, and change the referenced architectural drawings in the document set, for lack of better words, going forward.
And one, one last thing on process, has the Historical Commission seen these revisions yet?
Yes, Steve O'Donnell, Meredith Hall, Jim?
They're here?
Bill Mullen.
Bill Mullen, and anyone else?
Meredith, I'm Bill.
Meredith, Bill, and, and Steve were present on Monday night.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, is there a clicker that I can access, or would you like me to just flag you down? Thank you. Excellent. So, to introduce myself again, since we're the new, newcomers to the team, I'm Christina Carlson from Union Studio Architecture and Community Design. I did want to tell you a little bit about ourselves, and I realize I'm absent from this picture, but I have been an architect with Union Studio for almost 12 years now. I'm associate with the firm. Our practice has a very strong civic-based mission, where we're looking in every project, from an affordable housing to a rehab to a new community, to make an impact on the quality of the life and the experience of that place. So, here's a range of the project types that we do. It does go from design guidelines and community design, more urban focus, all the way through housing and some civic buildings such as libraries, we're working on hotels, and quite a bit of, you know, varied work that impacts communities. Some of the things that we look for specifically in a project like this, when we're designing for a new neighborhood, are all these things that make it really a place that people love and want to live in. So, we're looking for the way people have both public and shared communal spaces, as well as private spaces. We're looking at how it's friendly to pedestrians and makes you want to walk around and meet your neighbor, and we're also look at, at the context of the architectural design within the greater community, and how these neighborhoods integrate with their surroundings. Here are a few examples. We have projects from coast to coast, so there are a few up here that are all the way in Seattle, all the way through to Rhode Island and Massachusetts area. This particular slide I'm showing you are all prototype housing type projects, and I say that because they're all things we've done with other developers, similar to Northland Residential. These aren't our high-value custom residential clients. These are builders that are doing speculative building, and, you know, I want you to see some of the quality that we can bring to those projects as well, from small-scale cottage courts up to some larger homes. And these pictures are the projects we've worked with, specifically with Northland Residential. You can see on the, the bottom left, this is the Weymouth project called Dorset Park. On the right, this is a project under construction, that's an infill lot in Wellesley, and this is right on the corner of their historic district. And above is the project that Jack mentioned, which is a 40B, also in Wellesley, that consists of a variety of duplexes and carriage house homes. I think we can move pretty quickly, because I'm sure everybody's familiar at this point with the site on Canton Ave, but we did want to review some of the, the previous conversations that you've had, the process that we've, the previous architect had looked at, and how we're continuing some of those ideas and also building upon them. So, you're familiar with the three homes that are existing and will remain. These are all estate-like, almost manors on the, on the property. This is the general type of feel for, for the property, where you're looking across these large rolling meadows. It's very naturalized, and yet also with a touch of landscaping and beauty to it. There's a great intermittent stream that runs through, that in some places is built up with rocks, perhaps for irrigation. And these are some of the views and, that are going to be maintained with the landscaping, and also the context in which we're building. So, we're thinking about maintaining this estate-like character, even with the addition of several homes and a new community within that site. So, for the three existing houses that are going to be refurbished, Devon's House, Walcott House, and Manor House, and there is, there's been a lot of thought about how the new architecture is going to integrate with those homes. So, the architecture is relating to the house that is nearest, and they're also being thought of in these great clusters. So, everything near Devon's House is thought of as carriage houses that might be part of, you know, the original arrangement of that property, as well as the units adjacent to Manor House that form a cluster. And then over near Walcott House, we're introducing, there's an idea that we'll introduce stucco and some other materials that complement the Walcott House. And then further north in the project site, we have some opportunity to introduce some new kind of wooded and meadow land types of architecture. So, when you put that all together, you can see these, this map of the site, and how all those clusters kind of intersect, and the wooded area is this new section of the site that's running across the back and completing the circle of the new Loop Road. So, the architecture from Gristato Veleco, this is one of their perspective views, coming up the entry road into the, the site. So, you can see here the site of the male pavilion, and you're looking here at the back of one of the new duplexes, and you're looking at it across a meadow, and we'll come back to this view later when we get into some of our proposed designs. This is another view they did of the Walcott Cluster, so here you can see the introduction of the stuccos to blend with the character of Walcott. And this is an example of the architecture that has been approved, and again, this is just a reminder to everybody kind of where the project has gone. And Jack has, you know, and Jack has mentioned that this is architecture that they've used on other sites, and I think it's a, a style that is quite common in a lot of new developments. So, it has this, this flavor of colonial, classic detailing that is quite nice and draws off of some of the buildings that are on site as it exists. So, this was our starting point, but also where we needed to find what that fresh perspective would be, that we could bring to the project. So, the first thing we did first, after looking at this package of what you had already approved, was to start looking through the architecture of Milton. You know, we wanted to understand your town a little bit better, what's here, and what would be appropriate for the site. And there is a very, very diverse range of architecture in Milton, so I might have shown you a slide of Italianate, or shingle, or almost a variety, you know, any myriad of things, and said, this is a style that we're going to do. But what I've, what I've chosen here is reflective of this very eclectic, kind of verging on Tudor style, and we focused on this for a couple of reasons. One is that this is a style of architecture that was very popular about 100 years ago, where people building new homes or drawing influences from overseas, so they're pulling French traditions, they're pulling English traditions over to the US, and they're building their new homes in those styles. And that's the architecture that you see at the site, and it's also architecture you see all along estate homes of Canton Ave and the area. So, it speaks to these larger homes, you know, the wealth of, that you see in a lot of Milton, but you also see these styles reflected in some of the smaller homes and the infill spaces, and at the scale that's more appropriate to the duplexes that we're offering on the site. So, we thought that these great steep pitches, sloping roof lines, one-and-a-half-story forms, dormers, they would fit really well with what were these building types, where we're working with these relatively large footprints of these duplexes. These are two homes with attached garages, so that generally the footprints are rather large, but we also are dealing with relatively modest home sizes. So, this was our, this was our kind of stepping point and inspiration from Milton. And from there, we looked at, you know, this idea of borrowing these architectural styles is still quite popular in architecture, and here are some more contemporary and modern interpretations of those styles. And that's what we're looking to do here, is not necessarily build something that could have existed on this site for 100 years, but pull in that character, give it that fresh up, kind of up, upgrade, you know, where we're using more modern materials, maybe a little bit more, the exaggeration you see here on some of the roof forms and detailing, that gives it a little bit more of a contemporary feel, so that it's clear that it's of the age, it's of 2020, but also drawing from these historic precedents that we looked at. So, looking again at that comparison of how we've applied that architecture and that style and that attitude, on the left, this is one of the approved designs, and the perspective of what that looked like, and then I wanted to compare with how we were thinking about the massing and styling of that building. So, one of the first things we did was to take the major masses and volumes of this building, and take it away from the centralized, you know, focus on the front doors in the center of the building, that's really drawing your eye and your attention, and we wanted to pull that gable to the sides, so that you have one here, one here, so that you're starting to read this as two joined, one-family homes, with a lower portion of roof and connection between the two of them. We also wanted to make sure that more of that gable end was happening with the living space, rather than on top of and celebrating the garage doors. And the last thing I'll point out here is that we also wanted to celebrate those porches and that living space, and pull it up to the street. I find a lot of neighborhoods that have the garage doors pulled the most prominent on the facade, even though it's giving you a lot of relief on the street front, it's hiding those doors where this other unit's tucked behind the garage. So, when you're seeing these units on the oblique and walking down the street, walking your dog, all you see are the garage doors repetitive. You'll see these doors, and then you'll see the next group of doors at the next unit. And so, it's really a neighborhood of street, of driveways and garage doors, and we want this to be a neighborhood of front porches, of living spaces, a place that's going to draw your eye, so when you're walking down that sidewalk, you're seeing the living spaces, you're seeing the life of the neighborhood. And the other advantage to this is that we, we like that street edge to be very well-defined. So, here, we're pulling all that frontage forward, so that when you see these buildings adjacent to each other, you're, we're forming a continuous street edge that, again, is going to form these wonderful places that people will be excited to walk down and be drawn through. All right, here are a couple other examples of some of the buildings in our, in our designs. In that last one, you'll, you'll also notice that another strategy we took was, I know there was a lot of talk about the four garage bays in a row on these homes, and so we introduced a type here that ha, has a bedroom that's going to situate between the garage doors, and that allows us to break up the garage bays. So, you'll have this landscape buffer, you'll have the break of windows, you'll have some space between the driveways, and I think that's going to take away a lot of the concern for the repetition of the garage doors. And then in the one type where we weren't able to do that, in the other, one of the duplexes, we've handled the, the four garage bays together, a little bit differently, by taking one of the, the bays closest to the home and pulling it into that volume of the single-family house. We've done that again on this side, and then we've recessed the middle two, so they're a little bit lower, they're a little bit set back. So, again, your eye is seeing this volume as being the home, this volume is a home, and you have a little connector between the two volumes. And we think that that approach is going to draw your eye and attention here, and to the porch, and here with the porch and the frontage, rather than to the garage doors as being the primary focus of that facade. And then in the last example, this is another one where that bedroom is separating the garages from one another, so you get that little bit of relief and separation, but that same idea of these two houses being connected, rather than one large structure. So, we, we did a study because, again, the garage doors were such a concern, and I think there was a wonderful idea here of using different door styles, they have different panelings, they have different shapes, and we've taken that a bit, a step further, where we're also looking at having doors next to each other, maybe be different heights. We have some where not only the panes of glass in the door, but also the door opening form a different shape, some where the, the door has the glass within the door, versus others where the glass is above the door. And then also, you see a variety of materials, so some are set in brick, siding, shingle, stucco, so we're getting a lot of variety just in the, the openings themselves. So, the, there's a great eyebrow on the northwest side of the site in the, up here. We thought that was a great place to get a view, where you're looking at three of these duplexes all together, so I know that's a concern. You know, we have, when you put three of these homes together and each one has four garage bays, you know, you're looking at the 12 garage doors across, you're looking at six homes, and what is that, how is that going to appear on the street? And what we've, what we're trying to show here is that what you're seeing is this pattern of the home, the lower part, so you can see each of these volumes stepping up as little cottages marching down the street, and that's the primary feeling, the massing, and the, where your eye is drawn in this, in this scheme. We've also looked at the, the carriage house type, and that was, I think, called unit, or type A in the approved plans. And the carriage houses are drawing off of the existing carriage house that's being moved to the property next door, but we also had a, a few precedent images I wanted to show, just showing how incredibly simple the roof lines are often on carriage houses, the accentuation of the cupolas that you see in the existing, and those are things that we pulled into the, the garage portion of this house, and then we let the house itself have the roof form that is corresponding with the rest of the duplexes, so that it fits into the character of the street. Then I wanted to point out the sides and the rears, because on this site, almost everything is going to be seen in the round as you move through and around the, the site. There are a lot of views across meadows or around corners, where you're seeing these elevations, and they're almost as important as those fronts, so I don't want to focus just on that front elevation. And what I point out here is that in our rear, in our elevations, the gables that you see on the front are the same gables that work their way all the way through the architecture to the rear elevation, so that same pattern that you saw of the home and this connection and the home, you're going to see that from the rear elevations too. So, when you're entering the site and seeing these rears, they have the same quality, character, and massing of the front elevations. And then on the side, because we have that gable coming all the way through the unit, we were able to have a little bit more freedom to design that side elevation, to maintain that same character and scale as the front with that gable, rather than using large hips or gable ends, or gable sides, to achieve a roof going all the way from front to back. So, what you experience side, on the side elevations, is going to have, again, that same character and scale. So, here is our version of that view coming up, up the road and entering the site, so you're going to see the large meadow, and I'm told by the, the landscape architect that this is a that this is a, uh, naturalized meadow, so there's actually no recreation happening there unless you want to get a lot of ticks. Um, also this area is much thicker, um, undergrowth that we are not cutting down. So this house is going to disappear entirely behind the landscaping. And then also as these trees mature, you're going to start seeing less and less of what's but beyond. Um, but again, I wanted to point out that here you're looking at the back of the house. Uh, but you could see the back of two duplexes and you can see the, the gabling and the character. Um, and then across the street, you're looking towards the front of one of our units. Uh, so I'll run quickly through the entire portfolio of houses that you saw and designs that you saw in the package that we submitted. Uh, so the first one is, uh, type A, which is the single family, um, style house that has a, a story and a half with an attached garage. Uh, in this, uh, in this, um, unit type, we're offering two different elevations. One is this shingle style, um, that will be in the woodlands or maybe, or near, um, Devon's house. And then we also have one that's rendered in a, a stucco that would work in that Walcott cluster. Uh, the second single family type is a, a type C unit. So you'll see this later on in some of the duplexes as well. Um, but here we've rendered it as a single family standalone that's going to knit within the neighborhood. Um, again, here you can see where we've pulled that porch into the main form of the house to make sure that it's up front, it's prominent, it's celebrated and very visible and accessible, um, as you're walking by this unit. In this version, so the next three are some concatenation of duplex units B, C, and D. So in this one, we've combined the C and the B types. Um, and I know the board went through some changes over the course of the application to make sure that none of these units were ever a mirror of a B and a B. So all of them have, uh, this wonderful kind of organic asymmetry to them. Uh, so in this one, the C type is, uh, the one where we have the gable over the garage doors, but it's offering us that hyphen of the bedroom in between the garage doors. And we have it here with a, um, a, a brick base and clapboard siding on some of the, um, the gable ends and hyphen pieces. And then here we have it in a stucco siding and again, for that Walcott cluster. Uh, this one is a combination of unit C, so it's that same unit on the left side. But you can see again, we've dressed it up a little bit differently, uh, to add to the variety. And then on the right side is the D unit, which has a side porch. Again, we're pulling that porch into the main facade all the way to the front so that it's, it's, uh, integrating with the pedestrian experience of the place. And then here is the, the last combination is a D and a B. In this case, we're only, um, going to see this unit in a, a, a wood siding. So this is a shingle siding, uh, because it does not ha, uh, occur in that Walcott cluster that we've been focused on. Um, and here, again, this is the type where you see all four of the garage doors together. Uh, but we've been able to, um, you know, again, draw the attention and of the design to the house and the porches. You know, with full with porches across the front, a lot of windows, front doors, bay windows, uh, so that the garage doors become the secondary feature rather than the primary feature of these facades. And if we put all of those, uh, together, uh, this, this page is those units we just looked at. But I wanted to show you all of the wood siding options that we put together uh, that are going to appear in that woodland area we talked about. So we thought that the, the side, the lap siding and this shingle siding and those more, um, kind of organic woods, um, wood tones are going to, uh, you know, fit so nicely into that more naturalized area. And then for the Walcott cluster, these are the three versions of a stucco elevation, uh, that we created. So I do have, um, a few more slides that have all the side and rear elevations. I wasn't going to go through them unless there were any specific questions, um, on those. But I was just going to leave you with this last image of one of our sketches um, to give you the feeling of the character that we're trying to achieve, uh, with this new architecture. And with that, I, I will open it up to questions.
Okay, should we put the lights back on? Thank you. For the thought out presentation, well thought out presentation.
Thank you.
Um, before, uh, we get to board questions and comments, um, oh, you're missing a chair.
Yeah.
Um, I wanted to give the opportunity for the historical commission to, uh, come forward and give us, um, their comments. Hello, Stephen.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Steve O'Donnell, uh, Chair of the Historical Commission. Uh, we did hear this presentation the other night and we are absolutely floored by what a relatively small number of changes can accomplish in the total package. Uh, I asked the question of this young lady the other night, did anybody mention garage doors to her? And she said, yeah, once, twice, maybe three times. This does away with the genericness of what we were seeing before. And it's almost as if she had heard many of the comments we made during our meetings and I heard made during your meetings. I think this is just a tremendous improvement. And we would ask you to, uh, approve the change and the special permit to allow, uh, this firm to take over.
Great, thank you, Stephen. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to, um, provide any comments or ask any questions? Okay, saying none, board members?
I, I, I will say, I don't know anything about architecture, but I think that this is phenomenal and you did a very good job. You're a very talented person. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I like it a lot. Well, I, I wasn't on the original one and, and I personally hate looking at a bunch of garage doors sitting around on the street. So I really love this design. So, um, I think it's terrific, but as I said, I didn't have any opportunity to see the first version, but.
And Danny?
Oh, I think it's excellent. I think you did a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, um, I, I, I agree with all my colleagues. Um, I think the change in the, the way that you took the, um, the roof lines, the volume of roof away from the garages and pulled it out to the sides definitely changes the scale. Um, and then picking up on the different styles, you're getting a lot more variety um, than what we were getting before, I think, and in making it more, um, of a neighborhood that may have been built over different time periods by different builders. So, um, and, and of course, the garage doors, which everyone's talked about. I even think the change, the slight change in elevation between the two is a nice way to break up the, the driveway concerns we've got about the wide driveways and the garage doors, so. Um, so, thank you. Um, I, I think with that, then I'll take a motion.
So I, we have to, a specific language for the?
The motion would be to amend the special permit to approve the change of architect on the team and to change the architect, uh, to approve the changed architectural submission.
All right, I would make the motion to change the architect on the team and to, um, accept the, um, new design drawings.
One second.
And, uh, before, uh, we take the vote, um, Bill, I would understand that these, um, drawings would be, um, need to be enumerated so that the, uh, the follow-up, um, in terms of our motion, I guess we would say, um, as presented on today's date, um, to be followed with, um, drawing titles, I guess, drawing titles and numbers. Normally, because we would reference A1, A2, A3, et cetera, with a certain date on them. Um, so I guess what I'll ask is for a friendly amendment, Kathleen, to the motion.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that it would be drawings estimated and this, the date on the, uh, drawings, Bill, today's date?
February 10th.
February 10th? Um, okay, so with that, I guess then the, the amendment would be, uh, the architectural drawings as dated February 10th.
Okay.
Okay, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good work.
All right. All right, so, uh, as we, we'll just wait a minute here. So as we noted at our last meeting, as, as Bill advised us, um, the town had received, um, three, uh, or notification that three, uh, 40B, uh, site approval letters had been received from Mass Housing. Uh, since that time, um, I think, hopefully all of us have had a chance to look at the applications that were filed that are on the town's website. And I know some of us were able to take advantage of the site walks that were held with Mass Housing. Last night, the select board held a first meeting, uh, where they discussed two of the applications. And they scheduled two more meetings while they'll be discussing all three of the applications. And there was a, I did attend last night, there was a lot of interest in these applications and I'm sure they'll continue to be. The applications again are 582 Blue Hill Avenue, uh, 648, um, Canton Avenue. And then, um, what we've been calling the Falcone Project or East Milton Square, the property that is bound by Bassett Street, Franklin and Adams Court. So, uh, the comment period, um, has been, the select board had, um, requested extensions and those were granted. Um, and for the Canton Ave and the Blue Hill Ave, the deadline is now?
April 15th.
April 15th and for the East Milton, April 20th, as I understand.
Yes.
So as we did on the Ice House application, um, we're going to plan to submit the letter, uh, to the select board uh, and perhaps to, um, directly to Mass Housing for each of these. The, um, I guess on the, the two of these that want, the, the East Milton one, that property has been in discussion for a couple of years. I think we're all aware of that and we're all aware of the discussions ongoing in terms of potential overlay. The other two came in out of the blue and have not been on anyone's radar screen in terms of redevelopment, um, opportunities. I think, um, a lot of the residents are quite concerned about the scale and inappropriateness of, uh, the scale in the neighborhoods in which these two properties are. And of course, the other thing is that, um, these are have, these, both of the Canton Ave and Blue Hill Ave properties have, uh, historic structures on them. Um, structures on the Canton Ave dates to, um, the late 1800s and the one on Blue Hill Ave, 1925, I believe. The Blue Hill Ave also has historic gardens, um, that are onto the side. The Canton Ave is just under five acres and the Blue Hill Ave just under four acres. The Canton Ave is proposed to have 132 units with 200 parking spaces. And the Blue Hill Ave is proposed to have 120 units and, uh, I'm forgetting exactly how many parking spaces. We have, I did a, I did a spreadsheet. 180, yes, thank you. Uh, by the time you put 180 parking spaces and 120 units and a fire lane all around it, you pretty much, uh, take down all buildings and all trees on Ca, on the Blue Hill Ave site. And on the Canton Ave site, uh, the same thing. You pretty much take down all buildings, all trees. Uh, and you, in both cases have structured parking, so the parking is underneath the building. So given, um-
They did say they were going to save some line of trees on the driveway for Canton. Just wanted, full disclosure, they did say they were saving some of them.
Looking at their site plan and where they're putting their stormwater and their parking, it doesn't seem likely.
They said that, I didn't say it was actually going to happen.
Right, um, so I think we would all share concerns of all the neighbors with regard to the scale of these. Uh, there are, um, I think a lot of different, um, aspects of the scale that we can look at. Um, one of the things that I've been doing is, um, trying to understand how, um, an applicant can come in and say that there's some relative, that these are, have some relative scale or character, um, found in Milton elsewhere. So I wanted to, um, show you a little bit of, um, some of study that I've started. It's not complete and I haven't been able to mass it in the East Milton one yet. Uh, but I began to look at the scale of the Canton Ave and the Blue Hill Ave. And I would like to show you those now. I'll have to go over to Bill's seat for that.
I got the popcorn everywhere.
Popcorn. I don't know. Do you have it still here, Bill? No. I thought you had it, sorry. I just popped these open?
582 first?
Right, oh, so where, but where is it? Oh, sorry, okay. But we don't have it on the, I think we have to go back to this. All right, so this, this, Bill, this is the size of-
You're a boy.
The size of a cabinet. We're, we're trying out software on Bill's laptop that I normally use on mine. So we're not quite sure, sorry. This is, uh, a bit of an experiment here. Here we go. Come on, open up.
Is it down at the bottom?
Let's see how that-
Right there.
The executable, no, well, that was the really, should I go back and try the other one? All right, we're, there we, well, there we had it again. So we have to look quickly in case, when it does come up. I'm going to try going to Blue, uh, to the Blue Hill Ave first then. There we go. So, um, this is Blue Hill Ave here. And this is the existing, um, house. It doesn't show the gardens in the back, but it does show the topography accurately. So if you get an idea of looking, it's a pretty steep, uh, you know, slope. I don't know what's going on here. I'm going to quickly try and show, overlay the, um, the proposed building on top of this before we lose it again. That's what they're proposing. And if you go around the back before we lose it, they have these big retaining walls here. And then a, a fire lane around, this is the parking, this is the existing house in here. And this is four stories from here, but from this little neighbor, I mean, from this neighbor to here, you know, Meeting House Lane, this is what you're looking at from Meeting House Lane. And this is, I don't have Delphi Academy built yet, sorry, this is the problem with this. We're going to try and get my computer in here next time. But this is where Delphi Academy is here and there's this huge retaining wall that wraps around. This is the existing garage. And then there's a big parking lot in front. This is, this is, um, not as wide, not as long as the one on Canton Ave. This one is just nearly 300 feet and the one on Canton Ave is 350. This is 200 feet this way. Now, um, they're going, um, you know, in describing heights in their application, they pick, they pick this corner here, which is the, the shortest corner. And they don't, they don't really explain how all of this is working here. And because of this, I'm- And because of this, I'm going to go to the other site too, because I want to make sure we get to see... Bill, when am I going to get to see that one here? Open. Similarly, well, the white is their new road and their new parking lot, parking lot here. So this is Canton Avenue here. This is Winter Valley up in here. This is Holmes Lane. And then this is... well, this is the Kelly family, but this is Merwood Drive. It's really a private... Merwood Drive, but a private drive. I'm going to show the building here too. So here's the Park 32 car parking lot, and then the... that's what's proposed for this site. The property line is right here, at the very edge of the fire lane.
And the same thing on the other side.
And they're proposing a boulevard, as they called it, here. So there's landscape between the entrance drive. And then, yeah, if you go... and there's another parking lot proposed right here. And this is... this is a person right here?
I'm the one closest.
Yeah. You're...
I'm right there.
That's Robin in the front.
You're right here or right here?
Right there.
Right here?
Parking area.
Yeah. This is 60 feet, because this... they come in here and go into this parking deck here. So from Canton... sorry. We're just going to have to work our way through that. This is the... the parking is this, which is 200 feet this way and 350 feet this way. So if you wanted to... 350 feet like this, it's 50 feet here and 60 feet here. And you have... all of this is owned by one property owner here. And then this begins this property owner's... And then that's the existing house in here. So you can see that it goes... they're taking up, you know, a pretty large section of the property, very little. I mean, there's a... they're doing the drainage in here and over here, so the trees that are in here, a lot would have to come down to make room for the drainage. So they compared... they used some of the examples as Winter Valley, but we can see here that Winter Valley has a lot different scale than what they're doing. And then I want to also show... Let's make sure this one can open. It's a little bit larger file.
Cheryl, can you build something like this for the Parkway too?
I can, yeah. Like I said, I haven't... I wanted to fill out more around... like, 648 has the most built around it. Still working on around Blue Hill Ave. And still, I have some of East Milton done, but not enough yet. But I can do it on the Parkway too. So what I want to show you is this is 88 Wharf. And we think of 88 Wharf, I think, as a pretty big...
Yeah. 88 Wharf is probably the biggest thing in town that I can think of.
Uncwitty's probably bigger, isn't it?
Well, Uncwitty might be, and I was going... I haven't modeled that yet, but...
The reason I feel like 88 Wharf works is because it's in an indent, like a natural indent.
Yeah.
It works with the topography.
Well, it's also way off in the, you know, sort of...
It's on the edge.
Right.
On lower... It's not stuck in the middle of a, you know, residential neighborhood.
All right, so quickly, in case we lose this again, that's 88 Wharf. This is 131 Elliott, or the Hendrys. This is Milton Hill House, or 50 Elliott, and that's 36 Central. This is the Canton Ave. proposal, and this is the Blue Hill Ave. proposal. And these are just relatively flat. You know, some of the sites actually, you know, have slope. But just to give you an idea, because... all right, well, I think we'll leave it at that. I mean, I think we'll have some more comparisons like that. But I just think that these are going to be important for us to make our case to Mass Housing about the scale of these properties, not only being out of scale for their immediate context, but even relative to anything else that we have in Milton, so...
So I think it would be really great if we could submit those kinds of drawings with either our letter or with the Selectman's letter.
As an exhibit?
As an exhibit. Because I think we certainly on a site visit, it seemed as if the people from Mass Housing were really interested in that. And I think the visualization of what the project sort of looks like in the context of the neighborhood is really important, and for these two. Because the applicant was... was sort of... hasn't provided anything that shows how it fits in context. They sort of took a picture of, you know, 88 Wharf or a picture of something else and said, "Oh, yeah, this fits right into the town." But it didn't show anything about how it fits in the neighborhood. And I think that's kind of a problem for that.
Well, I think even the projects that they're using as an example of precedent images are a totally different scale too, and I think Bill is starting to mark that up on their submission, which is like, some of what they show is... are like 36 unit building is just a lot different. And the other thing about the buildings is that I've begun to do... I've begun a spreadsheet, which has comparisons across different data points, such as parcel size, total number of units, unit mix and size, et cetera. And not only is the Canton Avenue 132 units, but it's 160,000 square foot building. And when it's in part because their unit mix includes 56 two-bedroom units and 14 three-bedroom units. And their unit size is, like on the one beds, are 850 square feet, 1,050 on the two beds, and 1,300 on the three beds. So if we compare that to, as we're just thinking about different things, like the one in East Milton has studios, ones, twos, and threes, and the majority are in the studio and one-bedroom mix. And their unit size for a one-bed is 650. So when you add those up, or you multiply that up across, and, you know, you're looking at a lot different square footage in terms of... so that contributes to bulk. And the other thing is when you're looking at...
Well, they're going for... it's a different market. I mean, I think the... and also, I also think that actually talking to them, they haven't done any multifamily, these two.
The comprehensive holdings?
Yeah.
The two?
They haven't done... they have done one... they have one multifamily in Nashville and New Hampshire. Most of everything they've done in Massachusetts has been single-family developments. They don't have a history of running rental projects. They don't have the history of doing multifamily. Whereas the folks in the application in East Milton, that's Corcoran, they've done 40Bs all over the place. So I didn't think that they had the same level of experience in this kind of project.
Well, that's going to be in... do you think in our comment letter, or do you think more for the Select Board to incorporate in theirs?
Well, probably for the Select Board, because I think there's a... there's a big gap in the sort of submissions that they've provided in terms of the experience that they've... you're supposed to, in the application, talk about what your history is.
And they don't have resumes of the parties.
Well, and they don't... they don't have... they don't have other prior projects.
Right.
So...
So Kathleen, are you going to write our draft letters again?
Well, for these two, I don't think I should for East Milton, because I live in that neighborhood.
That makes sense.
Yeah, just also, before we see if anybody wants...
And I have to say that, quite honestly, I'm in general favor of that site for affordable housing project.
Excuse me.
True disclosure. I don't feel the same level of excitement about the other two.
So I guess, given that, maybe what we could do is have... I was thinking if we had maybe like a list of categories, of topics that we would want to cover in the letter, so almost like an outline. And then one of the others of us could help fill in, you know, the East Milton one then?
Well, I mean, I could certainly put together a draft, but I think they're... I think they're really different animals. The two that are in these high, you know, residential areas as opposed to East Milton, which we've been looking at for a 40R and been sort of looking at some kind of development there, I think that's a different situation. I'm concerned about the fact that, and I've mentioned to Steve O'Donnell, is that I think we really have to take a look at our condominium conversion bylaw, because I think the two reasons why... the major reason why we have these projects in these two spots is because it's less than five acres. And there isn't a way to use a condominium conversion bylaw for a lot that's smaller. And the house on Canton is on 4.97. And I think, I mean, when you look at the design that these folks had provided for Walcott Woods, you could think about a project at Canton that would use the existing house, take off the back part that was relatively newer, use the tennis courts, do a cluster of housing units that would be more sensitive to the site, would be more sensitive to the historic nature of the existing house. You'd save the existing house. You'd save the trees. You know, you'd save the landscaping much more than putting in this huge block. And... but that's not allowed, because we don't have the flexibility in our own bylaw to provide a seller with an opportunity to find a developer who could do a more sensitive project.
But could we not make some suggestions in our comment letter to what might... we feel might be more appropriate design for the site?
I think, well, I said, going... I think your idea about going back to what the, you know, the design guidelines are, and I think we made that case to the two folks from Mass Housing, and while we were chatting, was, you know, "Seriously?" And, you know...
Right.
And we also said to the developers that, you know, "You didn't show the context. You didn't show how this fits."
They said they're working on that.
Yeah, I think they have a clue.
I was going to... so, following up on what Kathleen said, back to Milton Muse, when I was fighting Milton Muse, I was on the other side of the table, and one thing that I learned was that it's important to get as many experts or data or something, so it's not just someone's opinion, which I agree with your opinions, because I have the exact same opinion. But would we think about maybe hiring a land use expert who could analyze the property and say exactly what Kathleen said, but in their own technical terms? I know on the Carberry-Walcott estate, Jack Dolly brought in a land use expert to explain why this was a wonderful idea, as opposed to something else.
That's in a different... I mean, it's a different context, because as I said, this is a site eligibility letter, so it's a different... you know, they're going to Mass Housing. Mass Housing's going to be looking at all kinds of things. They do an appraisal. They look at the numbers. They look at the experience or lack thereof of the developer, that sort of thing. So I'm not so sure that we would need to bring in, you know, technical experts at this point. I mean, that's really... if they decide to get... if they get a site eligibility letter, and we look at what the conditions might be, and then they decide to apply for the comprehensive permit, that's really when the zoning board would be looking at that. They'd be hiring the consultants to look at the peer review for the traffic and look at the peer review for stormwater and all that sort of stuff. That's partly done with the zoning board.
I'm saying that this would be good if there was any negotiation room with the developer to say, "Well, this is what would be more suitable for an area like this." And it's exactly what Kathleen said. It's...
Cluster.
Cluster, keeping the topography because of all the stormwater issues on both of those sites, I can see, you know, serious issues. If I was a neighbor, I'd be concerned about the water. One's high up and one's low down, and if you just basically cut a hole in the land and put a big box concrete in, and no pervious, you know, soil anywhere, it's a real issue.
Well, like I said, like Kathleen said, I think in terms of like peer review and other kind of consultants like that, my understanding is it's after they get Mass Housing's acceptives. I mean, there's no guarantee that Mass Housing would grant a letter of approval here, but...
Yeah.
They may, and they may put a lot of different conditions on it that couldn't... you know, that the developer would have to come up with a different plan. I mean, I think we want to make our best case for why it's not, you know, what we think, and, you know, we haven't talked yet about East Milton, and I think we'll have to pick that up again after we all have more time to look at that. But on these two, I think there's, I would think anyway, some consensus that we want to go back and say, "These are not appropriate in terms of the context." I wanted to draw a little attention to the design guideline and the project eligibility. But before that, I was thinking, Kathleen, and you may... you and I may have talked about this offline, is that we... in terms of being the planning board, we... couldn't we give the background of how in 2014 and 15, the town underwent an update of its master plan for the first time since the 1970s? We appointed an implementation committee that's been working on zoning language, as well as the planning board working on revised zoning. The housing production plan's been updated. I'm just wondering, in the sort of... that the town is making initiative. We know we haven't produced lots of housing, but would there be consideration for that?
It's a nice idea, but...
Because in their...
What I think we would be better off to say that we are pursuing a 40R for East Milton, you know, seriously pursuing that, and we're pursuing the overlay district for Milton Village. So... so, because talking about a plan that you have is like wonderful, but they couldn't care less.
But we could also mention two other zoning articles for multifamily that we've produced, the Parkway and Brook Road.
Yeah.
In the last year and a half.
Right. But we... so we really need to sort of... it's not enough to say we have a housing production plan, or that we have a master plan. It's not... that's not enough. We have to take... the only time that I've defended against a 40B successfully was we had the zoning in place for, you know, we had set affordable housing zoning over here, and they wanted to build in an industrial zone. And that got knocked out. And the other one was, we had set aside an area of town as, you know, farmland, agricultural, and we had bought farmland and agricultural land to preserve it. So putting in a water line was not what we wanted to do. So that, in that sense, it was a plan, but also acted on with actual money.
Yeah.
So...
So one... I wanted to ask you too. I found, in doing, I guess, a little digging on the Internet, how... that there was Redding, because they had adopted a Chapter 40R district, there was a denial on the site plan approval for a particular application because of reference to that?
Because they had taken the action. It's not, as I said, it's not just enough to have a master plan and have a housing production plan. You have to actually take a step. And it really means, you know, a serious one. So I think Redding, North Redding... actually, Redding was one of the first 40R districts, and I did that one.
Yeah, because this is from 2011. And then there... in a letter that the Planning Board of Weston sent to the Board of Selectmen in Weston in May of last year, they had an application they were looking at, and they cited that they recommended denial in the letter. And they were citing the conceptual project design as being inappropriate. And they cited a couple of cases, I guess, legal cases, where Mass Housing had denied project eligibility because of basically the inappropriateness. So in one case, in Norwood, where they said that the proposed four-story apartment structure is not compatible with nearby structures in terms of height... is not compatible with nearby structures in terms of height, mass, and scale. And then one in Medfield, where it said the project failed to make a reasonable transition to a well-established residential neighborhood. The denial noted similar concerns with regard to overall mass scale, mass and scale, and the proposed three- to four-story apartment structure was not compatible with nearby structures. And, and then again, in Medfield citing, Mass Housing had noted that the project was simply too dense for the lot on which it was located. So, I'm wondering if you can, as our resident attorney, can look into those and see if that's something we could cite as examples in terms of when we put, because like this was put in the letter that the planning board sent to Weston, through the selectmen in Weston. And I'm wondering if we, as our planning board here in Milton, could include something like that into our letter to the, because we're going to cite some more things. I mean, we're going to cite the same kinds of things.
We just did with the Parkway one, all of those.
Yeah, yeah. Because that seems like then, my segue back to in the, let me get the document in case folks want to look it up. It's the Mass Housing Partnership in cooperation with the Mass Department of Housing and Community Development, Mass Housing and Mass Development. It's called Chapter 40B Handbook for Zoning Boards of Appeal dated March 2017. And they have a section on page 11 called, on the, Chapter Three, on the project eligibility, and, and which is the phase that we're in right now. And they have the criteria, the subsidizing agency's decision criteria. And there's, looks to me like seven criteria here, and I'm not going to read them all, but the ones that I think that we, as a planning board, could focus on are the second and third bullet points, which is that the site of the proposed project is generally appropriate for residential development. And that, and this has to do with the overlay districts too, that you're talking about. And then the next one is that the conceptual project design is generally appropriate for the site, and which is okay taking into consideration factors that may conclude proposed use, conceptual site plan, and building massing, topography, environmental resources, and integration into existing development patterns. So, I think that's the part that we can focus on pretty clearly with, with the things that we're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
So, what was the process that we, I can't remember how we got to the draft letter? Did you just look at the application and just draft a letter that was a starting off point?
Yeah.
Are we going to follow that same process this time?
Yeah.
I think that worked out great. I loved it.
Okay.
And then the public can weigh in on our draft letter as they did last time, and we can build it out from there.
We're going to supplement it though with the graphics.
We're going to have the graphics.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Because they look great, except that we don't want to have that file cabinet in there every single day.
We're going to have to get the IT department to let him download the software, and that'll take care of that. All right, at this point, should we see if the members of the public, anybody here would like to offer any comments?
I just wanted to say to Mr. O'Donnell is that there, one of the requests for waivers on the Canton Ave, they have to submit a list of waivers that they need, that they're going to have to go to the zoning board for, and one of them is for a waiver of the demolition delay by law.
That's correct, but I understand 40B overrules demolition delay anyway.
It, well, it, they still have to ask the zoning board for the waiver. Yes, it would, the zoning board could, in fact, overrule that. That's why they're asking for the waiver, along with a bunch of other waivers. But there, but there are more of the requested waivers in the Canton Ave, actually, than I think there are in the Blue Hill Avenue one. But the one waiver, the, unfortunately, I don't think the house on Blue Hill is protected under the demolition delay by law.
It is.
Seventy-five years, right? Yep.
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
They didn't ask for, they didn't list that in the waivers.
They asked for one on Blue Hill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, does that mean that somebody could scoop in and buy it? By the property or just buy the house and move it?
Yeah.
The waiver just means they would be allowed to tear it down without going through the demolition delay process.
But if they didn't get the waiver? But if the ZBA didn't grant the waiver, what could happen?
They'd have to wait.
They'd have to wait two years, and in the meantime, could somebody come and buy the property?
Couldn't they appeal that to the state?
They could.
They could appeal it to the state.
Depending upon, there may be other, you know, as part of a whole.
Yeah.
Process.
The other thing I think we can reference is the handbook, the Approach to Chapter 40B Design Reviews. It was prepared for the Department of Housing and Community Development, Mass Development, Mass Housing, and Mass Housing Partnership. And there's a lot of criteria that go into more detail about the things that I just read off from the other guideline. So, I think I will definitely send some comments of Kathleen's way, and if anyone else would like to send some her way for the first draft. Anybody like to come forward?
I was also going to add, they both have been surveyed for Mass Historical. So, there is a survey of both of those properties that have been done.
Is it on the state website?
It's on the state web, on Macris.
Yeah.
It's not there yet. It was just done.
Oh, just done, okay.
Who held with them?
I don't know. She just did it. She did it.
Okay, well, if, if you have those and could send them to us.
I'll send you, I'll go with the draft.
That'd be great.
It's still a draft one.
Yeah, send it to Bill or Allison, and they'll make sure that we get it.
Yeah, because that would be helpful.
And I don't know if it's relevant, but, but being a scenic roadway, Canton Ave is a scenic roadway, which is the state.
That's another.
Yeah.
Thing that they didn't put in their application.
Right.
And it's along a scenic roadway, so if they're going to put a parking lot on a scenic roadway, that's.
Oh, but it's going to, it's going to be hidden.
It's set back.
Yeah, exactly.
It's the only set back of the entire property.
It's a piece of brass standard.
Yeah, yeah, pretty much.
The definition of a scenic roadway and what the state wants to do.
It's a town roadway though, right? It's not a state road, Canton Ave.
No, it's, it's, sorry, it's a scenic.
Scenic road.
Right, but the scenic road is a state.
No.
Canton Ave.
Canton Ave is, is a local scenic, it's a local scenic road. I just want to try and understand the.
Town meeting designated Canton Ave as a scenic road.
Right, and there's a, and we have in our rules and regs, a section on the scenic road.
Yes, which follows the state.
Right. And we follow the state, is what you're saying? Okay.
So, the state.
Thanks for clarifying.
Before April goes, we want to talk about, just go back to that change on the.
Yeah, just a quick. So, does anybody else have any comment for us?
Can you give us any suggestions of what we could do as Butters?
As a Butters, I know that you, I think I saw you both at last night's select board meeting. I would suggest you could continue to go to the select board, and if you haven't, you could actually put in writing what you said at the, to the select board, so that they can include it in a, as a packet. I'm trying to get clarification where, whether submissions like that can go to Mass Housing directly. I asked the select board about that last night, so I'm hoping that they'll provide an answer to the public about that.
This is helpful, showing the scale.
Yeah, your presentation was wonderful.
Thank you.
I mean, I think that is going to be maybe one of the, you know, deciding factors on whether they even get site approval, because, I mean, well, last night, one of my neighbors who's in commercial construction was talking about the elevations of this building. I mean, we're going to have permanent shadows on our house.
And I, and this program.
We're looking at walls.
Right, this program that these massing models are in will allow me to show shadow. So, it allows us to have it in, in the correct, you know, location in terms of relative to north.
Not good at doing this.
Well, it's all, thankfully, it's all automated now. I mean, we plug in the location.
The developer.
Oh, right.
Developers don't seem to know what they're, I'm praying that's the case, because they don't care about, I mean, they're, they don't care about 40B at all. You know, that's not, I mean, they, they put these things in their proposals, so, you know, Milton needs this, and this is such a great benefit for the, for the town, and they couldn't give a hoot about the town. You know, it's such a farce.
Have you mentioned some court cases where some of these proposals have been turned down?
Yeah, but it's difficult though. I mean, just as, you know, full disclosure in that I'm a real estate attorney. I've been practicing for almost like, well, 40 years probably. And I did spend a lot of my time working for a law firm that represents cities and towns. And in that capacity, I actually was town council for zoning boards that handled 40Bs. And also, full disclosure, I represent affordable housing trusts, not right now. And I'm also representing a Butters to a 40B project in a town west of here who are objecting to something on the same idea about the fact of the scale, that sort of thing. And so, they did, my clients have actually sent a letter directly to Mass Housing, as well as sending a letter to the selectmen, but they.
So, it can be done?
They did, yeah.
So, there's the answer.
And we asked, I asked that question when we were at Canton Ave. I asked Mike Busby if that was something that they would take, and he said yes.
If they would take.
A letter.
Yeah.
From the Butters, you know, so.
So, if you're asking about, you know, what else you can do, would be to draft that letter, send it to the select board, but send it directly to Mass Housing as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it would be to the, there's different project managers for the two sites. So, you'd have to make sure you check which one. It's Mike, Michael Busby and.
He's, he's Blue Hill, and Kat Miller is Canton.
But you could give, if you contacted you, Bill or Allison.
The applications are on the town's website.
And their name.
And the letter for Mass.
Mass Housing.
From Mass Housing is there too.
It starts, that's what starts the whole.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's 186.
Yeah, so the first thing is the letter from Mass Housing to the town saying, hi, guess what? Here's an application. So, that'll give you the contact information. But I don't think, there's nothing to prohibit anybody from sending a letter. They want, they'd like to see the select board assemble. But the select board is really just supposed to be assembling comments from boards and commissions of the town, not necessarily everybody that lives in the town.
Because we, as a neighborhood, we, a lot of us have been concerned, we don't want to be at cross purposes with any boards of town.
Right.
You know, we want it to be, you know, a good front and do it the right way. We're not go, oh, well, this neighbor just sent us this nasty letter, so we're not going to pay attention to this. You know, we don't want backbone.
Right.
Not that we're going to send nasty letters, we think our point, but you know what I'm saying? We don't want to be at cross purposes.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think all of the comments that I heard last night, you know, had having to do with safety, drainage, the traffic safety because of the schools.
Today, water was flowing off the front yard, right in front of that house, in the Canton Ave.
You know, the scale, the distance from public lines, all of that. So, all of those are, like what I said, you know, the comments that I heard last night, I think people could put into some kind of letter form, and that would be, and send them directly to.
Yeah, that'd be good, Mass Housing, right?
And we'll, we'll continue to.
I mean, you could address the letter to the selectmen and just send the copy to Mass Housing.
Right.
So, does Mass Housing then make a determination based on the evaluations they get from the various boards in the town of Milton?
Well, no, they get a letter from the select board that says the town has assembled all these comments, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. They do their own appraisal, they do their own, they did, the site visit is something they organize. And so, they do their own sort of check on whether the numbers work, you know, whether the, the thing that it's financeable. You know, is their pro forma legit, you know, were they showing for costs and all that sort of thing? Because that's something the town can't investigate.
And how often do they listen to the, what the town says?
I don't really know. I mean, most of the time, when I've seen them, there have been comments that the town has made that they have incorporated into the conditions. So, they issue a site eligibility letter and will say, you know, by the way, you have to have two means of egress. One isn't enough, you know, so that they will sometimes incorporate, you know, legitimate, you know, issues that the towns have raised. It depends.
But if even, so let's say they, they grant the eligibility, and then there's still a lot more opportunity to try and influence what is proposed and what would be accepted. So, in the case of one other application, it was like five years ago, right? The, the application that went into the Board of Appeal, the Board of Appeal approved quite a few less units than what was applied for, and then they challenged that, so there's a lot of back and forth on it. But in some cases, you know, the, the towns and the developers work out something amicable in the end. I don't know if that can happen here. I don't know.
Most of the times, the ones I worked on, they did. I worked on the Hendry's plant, that was a comprehensive permit that, you know, didn't get used, but the town issued it. But, you know, so there's some back and forth about what happens with the project. Sometimes the numbers come down a little bit, or the mix changes, or that sort of thing, or they, you know, they change the, change the plan a little bit to, you know, bring the building back into the site. There's always some things that you can work out. It's everybody's benefit to get to a common ground on it, rather than heading off to the land court.
But you said in the final analysis that something's going to happen on that property.
You don't know. I mean, site eligibility letters get issued, and then nothing happens. The market takes a downturn, you know, I mean, seriously, the whole economic change in, and I've been through, I don't know, four real estate crashes. I can't tell you how many times people have got site eligibility letters and then never built.
Well, there is one other factor where, where there are four, basically in a very similar timeframe. If one were to get approved at the Board of Appeal, or two or something, that.
Before the other one files.
Before the other one files, then there might be some opportunity for what's called safe harbor, which means that there are some protections at the state level not to have all of these be approved at the same time. So, Kathleen, maybe, and if you want to comment on that a little bit further, just for people to understand. I'm sorry.
I had another, I wanted to answer an earlier question to that, but I didn't want to interrupt you. One thing that was helpful when we were fighting 40B is we had all of our neighbors sit down and go through all 186 pages. And, yeah, I'm sure you, I can't believe you've done that so quick, because I'm still on page seven. But, so, we, you, so your first pass is pointing out, highlighting anything that sounds inaccurate. You know, if they say it's a quarter mile to public transit, and it's really a mile and a half, and you might, one neighbor's going to go out and drive it, or what have you. So, you actually get any inaccuracies, and I created a bullet list, and I provided that. So, that would be helpful for Kathleen to have and the select board to have, so they can point out any inaccuracies that you can find. And then, we, we were told that, you know, it's not enough for me to say, it doesn't seem like that fire truck could get around that turn, or, you know, things like that that were pretty heady. It would be good to get somebody from a fire association. So, it's not a letter from me, the Butter, it's a letter from somebody with, you know, safety credentials. And so, you're like building up a little bit of a case that's documented by experts. This is what I was told at the time. So, you go through that, and then you, we created another punch list of things that were completely outside the spirit of 40B. Or the whole, the legislation was really intended to revitalize a neglected area, an empty mill building on the edge of town that was never going to get utilized, but it was near public transit. Awesome. This is a win-win. If you look at the sustainable development principles. So, yeah, so you're on it already.
I've looked a lot in the air, so.
Right, and so, you know, that's where, you know, the, the scale and all of that comes in. And then, we were fortunate and also scared for the ecosystem at the same time, but we, we had, you know, being between Blue Hills and Fall Meadow, we had incredible ecosystems and signs of those ecosystems and wildlife, and we found blue-spotted salamander and so forth. So, we had a couple of neighbors who were out finding out that stuff. We also had archaeological resources in the area, so we were documenting those. But we were, as we were doing it, we were finding credentialed people.
People to back us up.
Who could back us up. So, that was helpful, and then getting them to write a letter too. And so, then what we did was we took everything that wasn't in the spirit of 40B, and we created a punch list, and it, I think it had 18 points on it. And then Alex Whiteside, who was on our board at the time, had been the general counsel for Mass Housing. So, he knew the language of Mass Housing, and we were very fortunate to have him, because then.
The HCD.
The HCD, I'm sorry, the HCD, sorry, Alex. And then he, so he wrote, he actually took, I want to say, 16 of our 18 points, because we, he needed, he wanted proof that it was real. it was real, it wasn't just the neighbors complaining. So, anyway, once that happened, he submitted his letter, and then when we got the letter back from Mass Housing, that they technically approved Milton Mews, because it met all the financial, checked all the boxes, they could financially do it. But the, um, they're not considerations, they're...
Conditions?
Conditions, conditions that would go before the zoning board practically had the same language that was in Alex's letter right back. So that was going to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals and going to have to be addressed there. And all of those bullet items were going to cost them a lot of money and a lot of time, so eventually that developer walked away. But we weren't over, because even when that developer walked away, future developers were circling, you know, so that went on for a couple of years. So we were, it, our headaches really, really stopped when, um, you know, another solution came available for that property. So it was, um, DCR bought a good portion of the property. So, um, in the back of your mind, if, if you're thinking of, is there anybody else who would want this property and want to do something that would be in keeping with the neighborhood and the town and so on and so forth?
But the Butters already said they would buy it if they'd known it was not going to happen.
Right, yeah.
Isn't there a 40B booklet that delineates what the criteria was?
Yeah, you can, well, you can go online, this Mass Housing Partnership, MHP, has a guide for the zoning boards that Cheryl just mentioned. That's available online.
This is, this is the cover of it, if you can see it.
It wasn't, um, covered?
Chapter 40B Handbook for Zoning Boards of Appeal, March 2017.
Yeah.
Cheryl, um...
And if you want to work with, if you want to create a punch list of those, you know, items, it can be rough, it doesn't have to be perfect, and share them with any of us, I'd be happy to research what kinds of things, we could boil that list down and make it the strongest case, because, you know, I haven't heard of a 40B being turned down because of traffic.
No.
And yet, it's what every town complains about, is we can't afford the traffic right here. But it's heartbreaking, because I hate to spend too much time in our meetings on traffic, because I know we're not going to win on those grounds. So although we all agree with everyone who says this is going to be terrible for traffic...
That's, I think, the least of the problems.
Yeah, that's, Mass Housing isn't going to listen, so let's move to the next thing.
So what are the things that would move Mass Housing?
Well, can, can I, I'm sorry, can we just table this discussion for one moment, because April, uh, will need to leave, and we do want to take a vote before she leaves, and then we'll come back to that, okay?
Sorry.
So we, we talked about revising, um, at least a couple provisions in the Affordable Housing section of, um, the Milton Village overlay, right?
Mm-hmm.
So one had to do with adding the, um, about the square footage and the bedroom count.
Yes.
And then the other would be in the calculation, and Kathleen has, uh, put a, um, some language together for that.
So, uh, the language would say, should the calculation result in a remainder of 0.5 or above, an additional onsite unit shall be required. Should the remainder be below 0.5, contribution to the Affordable Housing Trust shall be required in an amount equivalent to whatever we wanted to calculate that, however we wish. But that's what we would handle it. So if you have, if you do the calculation and you come up with remainder of 0.5 or above, then you have to add another unit.
Right.
Yep.
And if it's less, you make a contribution.
Okay.
Does that satisfy you, Jenny?
Yeah.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay, Bill, yes?
So you turned in a version of the bylaw on January 24th. So what you're voting on is going to be your recommendation to the Warrant Committee.
Right, yes.
For friendly changes to the article that was submitted.
And it would be in their recommendation, right?
Yes.
So, um, and that's why I mentioned at the outset, George Asher, the Chair of the Warrant Committee, um, imploring on us to do, hopefully do the, any changes as soon as possible. The warrant will go to print in mid-March. So anything after that, after Monday, maybe, would have to be a sheet at town meeting?
We don't want to do that.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, so, um, I just want to quickly say that, uh, on the parking and on the historic preservation, um, that I, um, I understand a lot of, um, the concerns, but, and they've been expressed before, but just quickly, I don't personally want to add any revisions related to parking or historic preservation. So if, if anybody here wants to add any revisions...
You do not.
You do not?
No.
No. All right.
I did, but...
I mean, we can come, I guess we can take the vote on the Affordable Housing piece, and we can discuss the pieces as it...
Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah.
I mean, I have to go, which I regret, but on the parking one, I feel very strongly about, and I think I've clearly said why. Um, so you don't need me to say that again for your discussion.
Okay, so, um, then Kathleen, would, would that be a motion?
I feel the absolute same way on the parking. We've talked about it, we've talked about it.
I, I provided you a two-page summary of some notes, things that I've said here at, at other meetings about why I think the parking is appropriate, but it, it provides some backup and some data. Um, and, um, and I probably have a little bit more that I could add to it. Um, and, uh, on the historic preservation, I just want to say that I think the zoning strikes the right balance between protecting the historic character, but yet allowing for redevelopment, and I think that's what we're trying to do. If we make the provision so restrictive, uh, no one will use this overlay, and we will be left with the underlying business as the only opportunity. So that's, um, my concern about those two.
I agree.
So with, um, you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make the motion to amend the, um, to amend our submission to the Warrant Committee to, uh, address two edits in the Affordable Housing provision. One to include the, um, affordable units have to be similar in floor design, count, bedroom count, whatever else was in there.
Yeah, size, unit size, by square footage and by bedroom.
By square footage and by bedroom. And secondly, to address Alex's comment, so that we would add language that said that should the calculation result in a remainder of 0.5 or above, an additional onsite unit shall be required. Should the remainder be below 0.5, contribution to the Affordable Housing...
Trust.
Trust shall be required.
Just have one question on this vote. So this is just to incorporate the changes into the most recent version, but it is not yet, are we taking a separate vote to send it to the Warrant Committee?
No, we already sent it to the Warrant Committee.
This would be sending, uh, a request for them to consider that in their recommendation?
This is the Planning Board's recommendation to the article.
So we would ask the Warrant Committee to accept our, um...
Friendly amendments.
Our, our recommendations, right? But it now becomes, the language of the warrant become, it is, would be in their recommendation. So in other words, you know how they, they have the article as submitted, and then the recommendation might be different than the article that was submitted?
Okay.
Because our article that was submitted, um, was already accepted.
Okay. I'm just trying to follow my, my voting record on this.
Um, you, you voted in, in this one, the revised one to...
I voted to approve improvements.
[laughing]
But I voted that I didn't think we were ready.
You did vote.
You voted to send it, and you also noted that you wanted to make, consider some more revisions.
The Selectmen opened up, reopened the warrant, and there were changes that had been made from December. You sent it in on January 24th with the changes that had been made to that point.
At the January 23rd meeting.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then, you've been talking about it since then.
I know, but, you know, I...
That's when the warrant was closed for the final time.
And, um, I mean, I mean, if you wanted to make suggestions for further amendments, we can consider them, but at, at the moment, let's take a vote on this particular, um, and is there a, is there a second?
A second.
And, uh, and is there more comment on these, on this particular motion?
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. All right, so, April, thank you.
Thanks.
See you in two weeks.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, April.
Thanks.
All right, um, do you, do you mind if we go back to the table discussion on the 40B, and then we can come back to the zoning, Jenny?
Sure.
Okay, so I'm sorry to have interrupted that discussion.
I think, when we, you think you might have those final elevations?
We meet again in two weeks, and so, uh, my goal would be to have graphics ready for then. Um...
And maybe for one of the Selectments.
Yes, yeah, well, uh, yeah, in fact, I might...
Because that really just shows it.
Well, um, you know, I started, uh, I started it for myself to understand, and, because I was alarmed by what I saw on paper. And then once I started doing it, I said, I think this is something that we all need to see and include, because I think it, it will make a case. It's one, you know, it's like a picture's worth a thousand words sometimes, right? We can describe something as being out of scale, but seeing it can be, you know...
Yeah, it was funny, because they weren't even, they weren't even truthful when you asked it. Actually, they weren't really sure. So I'm standing in the, in the, in the field behind the tennis court, getting ticks apparently, and, um, and the, the, uh, it's a good thing I have white hair, because they showed right up. Um, but the...
Were they jumping off trees?
I have no idea.
Wow, deer back.
Yeah, I'll say so, wow. No, I have deer, I need red.
Which will no longer be there.
Yeah. But in any event, I said, well, how much higher than the existing house is this project? So, because it's a sizable house.
Yeah.
And he said, oh, it's just another 20 feet.
No.
Well, of course, it isn't, because he was forgetting the garage. You know, so it sits on top of the garage. So even the architect couldn't...
One of our neighbors, who's in commercial construction...
Yeah.
Actually stated, it's up to 65 feet high.
Yeah.
And he said, 70 feet is considered a high-rise in Boston.
Yeah.
That's what we're talking about. I mean, basically, there's pine trees there, that's what we're, that's the size. I mean, we're going to have permanent shadows.
Well, and with the environmental concern about the permeable surface and the storm drain tax, that's going to be like almost five acres of just asphalt.
Pavement.
And today, with the rain, it was running off the front yard of the house that's right in front of it, with the dug-in. It was, as it has for the 26 years I've lived in, when it rains or big snow melts, it runs right off the stone wall on the sidewalk and into Canton Avenue.
Well, we, we had situation, when we had the same, this is a situation with Randolph Ave and that other 40B, which was the same engineer, engineering firm, and, and they love putting stormwater under the buildings. So that's where it's going to go for this stuff, so...
They have it under the building, under the parking, where the trees are, they have it everywhere. Um, the question is whether the soils are actually suitable for it, you know, I mean, the...
We were digging there yesterday.
Right.
But last night, the Select Board mentioned that there were three particular aspects that Mass Housing was interested in. And so, you know, we don't want to focus on things like traffic that doesn't, you know, matter to them, you know, if you have some insight into what types of things...
Yeah, that's where, that's where, if you, um, the document that, that I referenced, this, um, the Chapter 40B handbook, so again, you can take a look at the front page of it to get the...
We have a designated 40B website now, so I'll, I'll make sure that that's added.
You'll make sure that gets added, okay. Because in there, they have a chapter on this, this phase, and it lists the decision criteria that they must use. And, um, and some of it, you know, has to do with whether that's a proper kind of, um, limited dividend company, and, you know, whether they own the site. So those are things that they can check. And some of it has to do, as Kathleen said, they will review the pro forma and the financial feasibility, that's not for us to really weigh in on. And that's, that's why I said there's seven things. Some of them are really for Mass Housing, and some of them are for us to comment on. And so that's where you'll find those, in, in here. Okay, and, um, it's actually, you know, they, they reference that it's in the, which law that it's in. It's in this, you know, 760 CMR 56.04, and I looked at that too, and they basically summarize it here in a different language.
Well, I appreciate all the work that you've done. I mean, it was really comforting to, you know, hear what your preparation was, and that this presentation, I feel as though somebody has a handle on, I know what's going on.
Nice work, Cheryl.
Well, you're going to put the words to the graphics.
I, I, I do want to stress that you know your neighborhood better than anyone else, and you, you can, if you can read through that document and look at these Sustainable Development Principles, you're going to pick up on things that we won't pick up on, because we're not there every day.
They only really got themselves maybe to five of them, if at best. And that was really stretching, or totally BS.
Right.
And they only even attempted five of them, if I remember correctly reading through them.
There's a review book for zoning boards of appeals, and one of the statements in there is the note that's written here. Examples of constructive comments might include a relationship between the proposed 40B development and the local affordable plan. The existing infrastructure, roads, water, sewer, the environment such as traffic, stormwater management, groundwater quality, or suggestions how the proposed site or building design might be modified to better fit into the surrounding neighborhood. Taking it and going further afield is not, if, if you're talking about traffic, it's not going to work. If you're talking about public safety, that, um, there was a gentleman last night talking about, I, I can't, I can't cross the street. Those become issues that we can talk about. But the volume, volume is volume.
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, the, and the comments on Canton Avenue, um, this section of Canton Avenue being, um, basically between the high school and town hall, the police station, the fire station, the library, and Pierce, um, there are a lot of kids or youth who walk on the sidewalks, you know, and, um, the sidewalks are narrow, and the street's narrow, really, it's a 30-foot wide street. The sidewalks are less than five feet, um, and there's, uh, things that protrude into them. Uh, and when it snows, which this year it hasn't so much, but they don't plow, or both sides aren't plowed typically, and so they, you know, the youth are really only on one side. Um, and, I live on Canton Ave, and I, in this section, and I too know what it's like, the traffic at certain times. Um, I said to my husband last night, we should take a picture right now, because you can't move on Canton Avenue right now, when we were trying to go home. So I do think that the points about, well, there's being a lot of traffic, okay, well, that's how people get to the hospital, it's how the fire trucks get out, how the, um, you know, they, they come down Canton Avenue. So that's where the fact that you're adding more cars could have a safety impact, maybe differently than on another street. So I, I think, you know, the local condition, like I said, I, I know this section of Canton Ave well too, because of where I live, uh, but people who live on Blue Hill Ave who know that section well need to speak about those unique conditions. And, uh, you know, on Blue Hills Parkway and in East Milton, they all, Dennis is right, the people who are there every day tend to know the conditions better than anyone.
The other thing, um, I don't know if you have any special habitat or anything in that area, but like I said, we found blue spotted salamander. Um, but I didn't know they were there until we started looking, you know, it was a, that's a whole other story. But you, you may have something, you know, depending on, you may have something very special that you don't even know about, and you, you'll get thinking about it and stumble upon it.
Is there an environmental group that could...
We always used to laugh about the fact that we think there's somebody out there that rents, you know, those kind of animals, reptiles.
They didn't believe me. They didn't believe me. I know. Well, the worst thing was, the worst thing was...
Spotted salamanders.
I learned about getting the spotted salamander. I, I went to this state house, and I met this woman, and then I got a call from her, and she said, the, like, the stars align at 2:30 in the morning, it has to be raining for two hours, it has to be this temperature, has to be in April, da-da-da. Anyway, I said, this is either the best scam ever, or there's going to be blue spotted. Anyway, we got out there and we found one, and the worst, worst part of the story was, I stepped on it.
Oh, no.
So, whoosh. So it just seemed like, yeah, right, right. So, anyway, the, two years later... So, anyway, two years later, we went back to the same spot, same, same like, you know, conditions, and there they were again, so they're still there. But we never knew about that. And we didn't know we had archaeological resources in our neighborhood. Who knew? And, you know, being near the Fowl Meadow, so you know your neighborhood is special, but this is going to make you know even more special things about your neighborhood. There might be, you know, these gardens or trees, you have some special resources in there that attracted you to that neighborhood without you even knowing about it, and you might find them. And it's just from reading through and reading through and talking to people who have a specialization in an area, you know. So drawing your neighbors, the neighbors that were the best were, we had lawyers, they're always good to talk to. And, you know, specialists, if somebody's an engineer, or a stormwater expert, or a planner, or an architect, or, you know, they can each take a section and tell you what's going, you know.
But if there are things that you, as you go through it and you think about it more, you're certainly welcome to bring them back to us, for us to consider to put in our letter as well.
I've got four pages, just from reading it through two mornings ago.
Yeah. You can send that to me, if you want.
Not even close to being true.
Yeah.
I mean.
Send me that.
All right, I'll type it up, I mean, it's in handwritten.
We just scan it.
Just scan it, it's fine.
This page, you know, when there's.
You can just scan it and send it.
Okay, so we'll be continuing to talk about this at our next meeting at a minimum, if not beyond, until we get our letter finalized. So you're welcome to come.
We appreciate your help, please, because we don't know where to go on this.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right, to be continued on the 40Bs, okay? Thank you, everyone, for your advice, and for them as well. So, Denny, did you want to discuss further the comments from Alex? I know we kind of rushed through the historic preservation and parking.
Yep, we can read through them. All right, so wait to think. So, sorry, this is so loud. He, on page six, the bonus incentive calculation.
This is on the affordable?
Yeah. He said, under the example, none of the incentives would have any value or require any financial contribution. He's looking at the 12 or 17 percent.
I guess, you know, my, the bonuses are at the discretion of the planning board. If we don't see that we're getting any benefit, I don't see how we would ever approve the bonus. I mean, that's part of how we go through each special permit, we have to weigh it, right?
Right, so in theory, a future planning board could approve a fourth floor without getting anything for it?
No, because you're supposed to get something for it.
You have to say, you have to get something.
But, so, so they can't say?
They only apply, they only, it was, it's clear that it's not a guarantee that they get the bonus.
Okay.
It's discretionary at the planning board, it says in the zoning is discretionary.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, one of the. I mean, I think, to think about, I think somebody came to us and said, it was Alex himself, who said, don't even do a bonus, make that as of right. You know, so having the bonus, you know, gives us more opportunity to talk about what the benefit to the district is, right? And the fact that the bonus is, you know, a fourth floor that allows you to go up to 48 feet, it's not as if, you know, it's doubling the size of the building or anything, you know. In some cases, if it's a small lot, it's not a lot of square footage, you know, that extra floor. You can't, you want to give it enough.
Well, if you just, even if you think about the example we just looked at for Walcott Woods, and see how they change the massing of the pilings, the height is the same, but, you know, they've allowed different gables and different, you know, sort of floor configurations. And that's really sort of what you're trying to encourage with, you know, the height. If you have a height bonus, is that you want to have some reason for that. You know, that it's important for the design, or important for the protection of the structure.
I'm just wondering if he's confused, you know, if he's saying not having a definition for the bonus factor, I just don't want future planning boards to have confusion over that.
I think, I think it's a philosophical difference, I think, that we have between, an overlay district is over the existing zoning. And so, and so all you're really trying to do, in my theory of overlay district, is to provide some flexibility and some guidance. It's not rock solid, it's not meant to be rock solid. It's supposed to be allowing for possibilities over and above what you have, and to sort of direct the design in a certain way.
Right.
But not force the design in a certain way. And Alex is a person who likes to have the definitions and the every box ticked, and, you know, and I'm not saying that's bad, I'm just saying it's different philosophy. And I said, my philosophy, I think Cheryl's philosophy, and the philosophy behind the overlay district is to provide for more opportunities. And I think one of the things that we're finding now is that, you know, we get this overlay district through the town meeting, I mean, it encourages some affordable housing. And then we can say, in a defense to a 40B we don't like, that we have zoned for this. We are allowing and encouraging affordable housing in an area and town where we think it's appropriate, and we don't think it's appropriate over here. It puts us in a much better position, I think, to have the ability to say, we've taken this step, like we did with the Ice House, same kind of thing.
And I think mass housing was very receptive on the Ice House site, that we had done that mixed-use overlay, you know, in terms of thinking about what they would approve there. You know, they were definitely interested in the fact that we had done that. I think the thing to remember too about the business district has very few criteria, and no, and not a very rigorous process. You know, if something were happening, it's the site plan approval. I think you may remember, site plan approval is just, we review it, but we don't have a denial capability, really.
Right.
Whereas in this overlay, the special permit, we have a denial opportunity. So it's built into the zoning, so it's allowing.
So the future planning boards could deny it on a variety of things.
A variety of things, yeah.
And it would be defensible in court?
Yeah, because it's a special permit, it's not a matter of right.
Okay.
You know, site plan approval is pretty much.
A matter of right.
A matter of right. And that's why people like it. That's why in, sort of in a 40-yard district, it's site plan approval, for the most part, not special permits.
Well, that's because you have the design guidelines, which is.
Absolutely.
Well, we have design guidelines in here, which don't exist today. And that's, I think, I personally think it provides a much better framework to preserve the character of the district and allow development than the underlying zoning does.
Well, I think the underlying zoning protects anything at all.
Well, that's true.
I'm ready to move on to historic preservation. So on page two, he's talking about deterrence to demolition. And he's trying to steer developers to not demolish historic buildings.
Well, the one, and the one way I've looked at this, and I thought about this again, is there's nothing to prevent right now, except the standard demolition delay. And there would be the same standard demolition delay applied in the overlay.
Right.
So there's no worse protection for any historic building. The real way to protect these historic properties is with the local historic district. And I think if we make more stringent preservation requirements in the overlay than what's required in the underlying zoning, then it could prevent us from getting someone to use it. So we already know that if we do the calculation, what you're allowed to build on the major properties, like the Masonic Building on Adams Street, or the Webb Mill Building on the corner of Adams and Elliott, there would be, it wouldn't make economic sense at all to propose a new development on those, because you wouldn't be able to build what's there now, because you wouldn't be able to get the parking on the site. So then you say, okay, what historic building might get torn down? Well, not, maybe something that's in really poor condition might get torn down, because it would be so expensive to restore it. You heard Mike Roberts and his architect Stephen Chung say that they're going to completely rebuild the Swift Hat. But this zoning would say you can't do that, because this zoning would say you absolutely have to preserve it. And something that's built in the 1700s or in the 1800s is not likely to have anything about it that meets the current building codes. And, you know, you have to leave a little bit of flexibility to figure out how you're going to make that building work, if it's something that can be saved economically, and you're doing work, you know, around it, like they're going to do with the Swift Hat. They say they can't save it, they'll rebuild it. Why wouldn't we want to give that opportunity to somebody else in the district? Just like they say they need to do there. So that's my understanding of it, and my thinking on it.
I think it's his point about, instead of a two-year demolition delay, a five-year demolition delay on historic structures, that does kind of make sense to me, because this is, there are so many historic structures in the overlay district.
But how do we distinguish, we're distinguishing this district.
We can't put that into this, that's a separate bylaw.
Just in the overlay district, you can't?
No, no, no.
Well, what he's suggesting is that you have to preserve an historic building, which is an existing building, for these definitions that he's recommended. You have to preserve it, which means that, you know, there might be a building there on Adams Street that was, if it's 75 years ago, that's 1945. In five years from now, that it'll be 1950. We've got some buildings there that are built in the 50s. That means the Citizens Bank Building is a historic building, you can't take it down. This is the thing that becomes a problem to me, is that you lock something in again.
Yeah.
Without having flexibility, it'll hamper getting things done on sites that we want to have things done on. So that's.
And I think five years, I don't think you'd, I think you'd have a problem getting that by the Attorney General. Since most demolition delay bylaws are six months.
Yeah.
And we've already got two years.
I think that, you know, as I said, if we've all said, Denny, local historic district, and we said we'd support that going forward, provides the right kind of protections versus doing it in zoning.
In the right place.
Yeah, in the right place.
Well, I'm all for historic districts, so I'm so grateful Allison's joined the team, because she came at the right time. Well, I actually agree with Alex on what he says about parking, but I know Kathleen does not want to have that conversation again, and nor do I at 9:45 at night, so.
You won't be changing anybody's, you won't be changing anybody's mind, I'm sorry.
Well, I do, I just do, again, Denny, I want to point out to you, and if you want to, you know, share with him some, he asked for background, and, you know, I think that's a fair, you know, request, you know, in this document that I put together. I just want to point out, the existing parking, you know, and how the curbside parking, we know from the parking analysis, has some capacity. But like, for example, One Elliott, One Adams, the Webb Mill Building, that's a 32,000 square foot building that has eight parking spaces. And the Masonic Building, which is on Adams Street, has 26,000 square feet, and it has 16 parking spaces. And even 17 Canton Ave, which was rebuilt and permitted in 2012, doesn't have four parking spaces per thousand. So there's no, there's no building in the district that has four parking spaces per thousand. And that, on 17 Canton Ave, is the closest with 2.7. And then 5 Canton Ave has 2.2 spaces per thousand, and the Bank of America Building has seven spaces and 1.9. I think most people go to the Bank of America, pull up at the curbside spots. And the other interesting thing I pointed out before is that the Baker Chocolate Apartments are right across the river. They have a parking ratio of one space per two units, and, it's actually 0.7, so a little bit more. 0.7 spaces per unit, and they, the property manager told me they have an adequate supply. So I think if we just look in the district already, we know that.
Didn't you just see that one in Hyde Park that just got approved? What did we, we looked it up the other day, and that had like 1.2?
Well.
That one over by, you know, Fairmore?
I think another interesting thing is, like, I pointed out before that Boston, the Boston Transportation Department has guidelines for different parts of the city. And for Dorchester, if you're within a 10-minute walk of the MBTA, for office, it's 0.75 to 1.25 per thousand square feet. And for residential, 0.75 to 1.25 per unit. And if you're more than a 10-minute walk from MBTA, for the office, it's 1 to 1.5 per thousand, and 1 to 1.5 on the residential. And the, and so those are, it's really pretty comparable. This is really pretty comparable location, being right on the trolley. And then you can read on, there's some other things. I mean, the cost of building parking is really expensive, and it affects affordability. And it also penalizes people who may not want a car, because they end up paying for the parking spaces that had to get built. And the other thing to remember is that developers will propose enough parking that they think the market demands. And that's borne out in some of the articles I reference here. So, you know, I gave the sources for some of these things, so there's several sources for some of the kinds of things. Even the EPA has a document called Essential Smart Growth Fixes for Urban and Suburban Zoning Codes. And it basically says, "In many communities, the effect of conventional parking requirements is to make redevelopment of smaller parcels in older, mature areas infeasible, and to make dense, compact, mixed-use development nearly impossible because of the code requirements for large expanses of surface parking or expansive structured parking. Transit services, good bike facilities, and a great walking environment can reduce parking demand significantly. Mixed-use development coupled with good walking environments can reduce parking demand even further." So there's, the data is here, right? You're looking at it, you say, do we want to go? But I was like, no.
No, we were trying not to do parking.
Well, I just felt like it's been the, it's been a source of topic for a long time, and I've put the data there.
Okay.
And I just checked, demolition delay bylaw is under the jurisdiction of the Historic Commission, so we wouldn't have the ability to extend that.
Okay.
All right.
But I just want to, since you brought it up, traffic. I am a little concerned that the future 40Bs, if they do get approved, will look at this formula and try to say, well, they're doing this kind of formula, they've just approved it, this is the way they're doing parking in town.
That's fine. Seriously, if they had less parking, that would be fine. They wouldn't have to build some honking.
Actually, one of the things I thought, my, our comments I would like to consider is, you know, the parking at 1.5 per unit, to me, is producing a parking lot on Canton Ave for 648. And.
So you want less parking on the 40Bs?
I would like them to do, if they think they need that parking, then do less units.
See, they need that parking because they're not near any transit, that's the problem. So it's sort of, it goes back to the argument about why you have these honking buildings in a completely wrong place.
Right.
Because you need a car to get a quart of milk. So, you know, that sort of, so that argues for having higher parking in those areas, because you're building it in a place that's not near anything. Which is one of the issues we raised with Milton, with the Muse. Because that was what, 300?
Right, 276.
Something like that. And we said, wait a minute, you have to get in a car to go anywhere, to get anything. And so, going to the idea about why you want to build housing for people that need it, you don't want to put them in the middle. it, you don't want to put them in the middle of nowhere.
Well, um-
On a road, on Brushell Road, where there's no sidewalk and no places for bikes, but they'll give you bike racks. Love those 40Bs.
You know, ultimately-
Well, some of them are not that way.
Well, that's good. I would like to have some nice affordable housing that serves those in need of affordable housing, instead of these aggressive 40B developers.
Right, right. The, you know, the whole idea about how much parking we need really ties back to our public transit. And, you know, we're, the whole Boston area is choking on traffic. And Boston is now permitting projects without parking, and they're doing it because they want less cars. And if you don't, people will, their view is, people will self-select.
We did an entire affordable housing project in East Boston that had no parking at all. 120 units. And it was right next to the T-Stop, Maverick T. It has beautiful views across the harbor of downtown Boston. The thing is stunning, and we didn't have any trouble selling all those units. There was no parking at all.
East Boston.
Yeah.
We don't have-
Some of them do, the ones that have, like, you know, that it makes sense.
Yeah.
They do those, like, they'll put the designated space for zip cars and ride share.
We've put those into, we've put those into permits, that the zip car spaces and stuff like that.
Well, I mean, this, I think that Lower Mills, being on the bike trail and being on the trolley, is a different location, certainly, than Brushell Road. And, you know, you wouldn't apply the same parking standard across the whole town, is my, to answer your question about that being a precedent. But I, I think part of the traffic problems that we have are directly related to, if you continue to provide parking, people will continue, you know, who have cars will continue to use as much as possible. And, you know, there's a cost associated with owning a car, too, and the cost of housing being so high, that I, there are families, in fact, one member of the Master Plan of Mutation Committee, her family has one car, and they choose to have one car. And she's been an advocate of, that there are families like her, like hers, you know, where one car is sufficient, and they choose that. And, you know, younger populations are very concerned about climate change, and, and they are definitely, my daughter, in fact, told me today, she participated in a protest on college campus, because the new building they're designing is not net zero. And the students want to make sure it's net zero, because they're all concerned about the environment. So, and she doesn't have her driver's license. So, you know-
Is that in Paris, or is that back in the States?
This was actually in Connecticut, yeah.
Oh, okay, back in the States.
Back in the States, yeah. But in any case, I think that, you know, we also have to be mindful that, generationally, people are, like, there's some reference to articles that I gave on millennials, and Boston's looked at that, too, because there's less driving, less car culture, because of that whole concern about the environmental footprint.
There is, but I'm going to tell you, there's more cars on the road than ever, and the predictions are that it's going to continue, and it's, probably the population is increasing, too, but, so.
Yeah. I think, you know, at some point, the, how much it continues is how much time people want to spend in a car, and how much can they afford to spend in a car is what it's going to come down to. Because, you know, this, the, and there has to be investment in the public transit. There's just no doubt about it.
I agree with you on that.
So, Randolph Ave was-
Including bus lines.
90 units and 156 parking spaces. 1.7.
Yeah, I, the, I was doing it up.
The parking in the overlay, it's a minimum, so, that doesn't preclude someone if they needed or wanted-
A developer's going to do his market analysis.
A developer could always do more, but my, my feeling from the beginning has been that if we started it higher, started the requirement higher, and be something that we could wave down lower, then we would be able to have more control. In other words, if they come in and we don't think they have enough parking, we can't ask for more parking than we have in the language. So, I just wanted to flip it.
But the only thing is, it would, if we had, require more, then wouldn't you need a variance?
You would.
And the variance is not the root-
I thought we could waive it.
No.
No.
We can't, we can't, we, there's a lot of things that we can-
Those are design standards we could, but not the parking.
Does it design the guideline? Designer guidelines, and those are subject to change.
There's standards that we said that we could-
But in the overlay district, if you say you need to have that, and you set it up, that's, you need to get a variance.
I just want to say one other thing. Other, there are, there's, there are towns, and there's some reference to it in the, what I provided you. Some towns have gone, gotten away, I mean, they've eliminated minimum parking standards, and they're actually putting in maximum parking, because they don't want too much parking. And I think I told you before, in, there's a place in Utah where they had their parking requirements, and a bank was denied its expansion because they couldn't provide enough parking spaces. So, the bank bought a historic building and tore it down to put a parking lot on it, and said, "Now, we'd like to do our expansion, because we can meet the parking requirements." And that's the sort of thing that you don't want to see have happen.
No.
And that's the sort of thing you wouldn't want to see down here, is that somebody buys the building next door and tears it down so they can meet the parking requirements. I mean, that's the-
That's what you're forcing them to do.
And, you know, the cost of-
Sort of defeats the whole purpose.
That's what you're forcing them to do.
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
We're all packed up. I moved, I moved to run out the door. I moved to close the meeting.
To a adjourn.
I would second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.